Okay.
All right, we will go ahead and call the meeting to order at seven oh three. If everyone will please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And then we'll go forward with a quick roll call. Mayor Rogers is present. Trustees, uh, Smith.
Eric.
Crawford.
Eric.
Botter.
Eric.
Uh, Pritchard.
Eric.
Uh, Treasurer Doucette.
Eric.
PDW Superintendent Wolf.
Eric.
Clerk Laquet.
Here.
Uh, CEO Brecker.
Here.
All right, everybody is present. Uh, we'll go forward with the approval of minutes. Uh, so to have a motion to approve the April eleventh regular meeting minutes, April thirteenth budget hearing, April twenty-sixth, or April twenty-fifth joint special board meeting, and April twenty-eighth bid opening. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Also.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It is four to one. Before proceeding forward.
I'm sorry, who was the nay?
Myself.
Okay.
So before proceeding forward with the public comment, I do ask that everybody speaks professionally. Uh, everybody is cordial to one another, that we do not raise our voices, that we do not interrupt one another, as we do have an abundance of people here tonight. Um, if you are called for order once, that means please stop. If you continue to lash out and don't stop, then you will be escorted out by one of our police officers, okay? So I do ask that from everybody. And before moving forward with the public comments, I do have a notice to provide to the board. Rose. Oh, can I have one of those back? Because I need to remember one.
Did everyone sign in on the sign in sheet? Anybody that didn't?
So, um, what I just handed to Clerk Laquet and also to the rest of the board is a notice of claim against the village of Cataragus as well as Board of Trustees. Uh, the reason for this, or the nature of the claim which I'll read out, uh, states that unlawful termination of the village attorney, assertion of the mayor's powers, violation of the opening, open meeting law, official acts outside the authority of the power of the Board of Trustees constituting misconduct, maladministration, malfeasance, malversion, and malfeasance, and deprivation of civil rights under color of law. The reason for this is that on the eve of April eleventh, twenty sixteen, at around nine PM, uh, the Board of Trustees of the village of Cataragus and the county of Cataragus in the state of New York voted four to one with the mayor voting no to terminate the village attorney and cancel any remaining payments due under his contract. This is an, this is an assertion of the power of the mayor to discipline and terminate village employees under New York State Village Law Section four dash four hundred and is an attempt to accomplish indirectly that which the Board of Trustees is powerless to do directly. Furthermore, on April twenty-fifth, after a joint meeting with the town of New Albion was adjourned, the four members of the Board of Trustees with the mayor absent conducted an unannounced meeting with no posting of the purpose or time or location of the meeting at the village hall and with no other notices provided as required by law. At that meeting, the board again attempted to remove the village attorney and took other official acts unlawfully but under the color of law. So pertaining to this, this is essentially a settlement regarding, or a sue, I should say, excuse me, regarding the actions that the board did to terminate the village attorney, which they do not hold the power to do such. They may make such motion, but not while someone holds that position because it terminates their employment, which only the mayor can do. And so with that being said, I do make a resolution or a motion that the board authorize the office of the mayor to obtain an attorney to litigate this matter. Being the mayor, I will go forward and make that motion. Do I have a second? Okay. So with that being said, then the motion is turned down. Then nobody will go forward with such motion. And Rose, will you please add that to the minutes?
Authorize mayor to obtain... I'm, I'm trying to get the whole motion. Okay.
To litigate such matter. And so that will conclude.
Before we go any further, I don't remember our saying that we, uh, canceled any remaining payments due under his contract. I don't remember that at all.
That was stated that the board would not pay for any of the vouchers that Mr. France, when he held the position of attorney, whether he still does, I'm not sure because of the law states that the mayor is the only one to terminate when the board abolished the position as employee and changed it to be contractual. I'm honestly not a hundred percent sure on how that, on how that works. But the board did state that they would not sign any vouchers and that was stated in email in regards to that.
Well, we didn't terminate anybody. We abolished the position altogether.
That's right.
It's different. It's two different acts.
We abolished it, if the, the eleventh, April eleventh meeting at twelve thirty at night, not at nine PM, twelve thirty. And the wording that was put in the minutes was terminate. It says terminate the position even. It doesn't say terminate the employee. But we were questioned on it, so we fixed it. That wasn't the wording I used, but I'm, I know I was going to continue to argue about it. So we rescinded the motion as, uh, a representation from Nikon suggested doing and changed the wording to what was actually said. The meeting was an official meeting that was announced. So.
Well, regarding the, well, regarding with the meeting is that it was only scheduled for a joint planning or a joint with the town regarding the discussion of the Tannery Bridge. There was no meeting or notification that there was going to be a meeting that the village was going to hold to conduct village business, which that in itself violates open meeting law. But regarding all of that, we will discuss that later. At this point in time, we need to proceed forward with the call of comments so that residents and individuals do not have to go through and listen to us go back and forth regarding. Yeah, we should probably go forward with them so that they can move on. All right, so Jake and Jeff, you guys want to go forward briefly, discuss the, what's going on?
I will, um, from our end, well, we have basically two items on the board. We'd be expecting these. Uh, we opened up meter bids, um, at the end of April and we have, uh, in your board packet, you should have, uh, a lot of recommendations from our firm after, after that bid opening, after reviewing the bids and following up on references. Check the math, math on the bill to make sure there's no errors. Um, we have a recommendation to the board to award contracts. So with that letter is our, our bid summary. There are three bidders. Yerusi Construction, two hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred. H and K Services, twenty seven, two hundred seventy-four thousand eight hundred. And Anderson Short Title, two hundred seventy-five thousand three seventy. These are going to be close. We, the mathematics a little bit is Yerusi Construction. We followed up with them on references, called the references. Um, we didn't, didn't come across any issues with the references. I don't know, John, were you able to get ahold of anybody?
I talked to three different people today and they were very satisfied with everything. It's been done for them. They would have them back to do any amount of work at any time. They're really great to work with. They come in, they're, you know, social pleasant. They're, they're here to do a job and do it right.
Yerusi Construction has, um, done this very type of work replacing meters and houses because of Memorial Project, um, Williamsville. And so anyhow, we just had not, had an engineering firm and not personally ever worked with Yerusi Construction. And so we followed up on as many references as we could and didn't find anything that would lead us to different conclusions. So our recommendation to the board is that they, um, pass a resolution issuing a notice of award to Yerusi Construction. That gives them, um, I believe fifteen days for them to get their bonds and insurance together, return that to us and, um, and then the, and sign the agreement and the village would then be able to counter sign the agreement, which is the contract issued in notice to proceed, which would start the time clock rolling and actually being the meters to place. The, their bid, uh, comes in under, it's a little bit under what our estimate had been. But on the same order of magnitude. Are there any questions?
So do you need, does it need to be two separate motions or one motion?
Um, well, we, we wrote the letter with, uh, requests or recommendation for two separate motions. One is to award the contract to Yerusi. The second one is that, um, that, that tells them to respond with their groups of insurance and their bond. And basically what we sometimes do to expedite is if that is found to be in order, that insurance matches what's in the spec and their bond, um, is the correct value, which is a full value to payment performance bond for full value to contract, then, um, the board could pass a separate resolution authorizing the mayor or one of the board members, designated board member to execute the agreement and the notice to proceed so that we might wait a whole month. You know, if they get it back to us in the fifteen days, we wouldn't have to wait till the next board meeting to sign the contract. Um, that's up to the board if they would like to do that. Like I said, pass a resolution contingent on their bonds and insurance being in order. Hello, uh, the one other piece of information is there were two meters in the spec that were acceptable and Yerusi Construction's bid is, um, is based on using Neptune Leader in which meets the spec. That's what we identified. Uh, we believe it is a, a great product that fits our specification of what we developed with the village and what you guys are looking for based on looking at all the different products. John was happy with the product as far as coming up discussion with you.
And I, the lady I was talking to was telling me they had it out for three years and they said that Yerusi did the work and they, they're very well satisfied, but Neptune Meters, our Erie County Water Authority uses Neptune. So they're west of New York, probably the most common water meter.
Gotcha, gotcha. All right, so then, do I have a motion then to award the contract to Yerusi Construction for the amount of their bid of two hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars and authorizing the mayor to sign the notice of award? And do I have a second?
I'll start.
Get that, Rose?
Eric made the motion, uh, Jason second.
Correct. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Where did you say aye?
Yep.
Okay, it's unanimous, carried and approved. And do I have a motion, uh, to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement and notice to proceed as soon as the required documents described above have been received from the contractor?
I'll make it.
Motion was worth, second was Bob?
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, carried and approved.
All right, well then, um, I believe that there's three copies of the notice of award here, John.
Okay.
Um, the second item was related metering projects. We discussed last month, the metering quotes, um, on metering the overflow at the tank, the tank site to get the, the net balance of water in the village. Um, we received two written quotes on that. The equipment is, according to procurement policy, is under the threshold for a full public bid. And the two equipment quotes, um, one was from Cyclops Process Equipment and one was from, from Schumberg. Cyclops Process Equipment is who has done all of your telemetry system right now, so they will be able to integrate directly with what you already have at the tank site. And so our recommendation to the board is that they proceed with accepting the quote provided by Cyclops Process Equipment. The village did have, um, one piece of what they would need already on the shelf and was left over part from a previous project. And so that reduced the, the, the written quote by eleven hundred dollars. Let's use the part you already have and verify that part was acceptable. So their, uh, their net quote then would be one thousand forty-five dollars and the village water staff would assist them the day of setting up.
Do you need a resolution for that, since we're?
Um, I, I believe we probably should. I don't know, um, under the, the dollar really, but it would be a good idea.
Especially the CDVG, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion then to, uh, accept the proposal from Cyclops for the supply of Mach III ultrasonic transducer program and training for the amount of one thousand forty-five dollars? And have, yep. And have the town water department or village water department order the equipment and schedule the installation? And do I have a second?
Second.
That was Eric and Bob?
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? It is unanimous, carried and approved.
Now, I'll let Jeff speak. There, I have, um, yeah, I have half of the, the two quotes. I believe probably John will go through the order and process.
John can just go ahead and say it, right?
Okay.
Then the, the final thing was, um, I'll, I'll let Jeff speak. I mean, I believe he was going to go over items related to the Phase Two project, the water grant. Um, we just wanted to say that, that we were hoping that we can hopefully schedule a meeting with, with John and then, um, the board adds, if any of you that are interested whether we need to publish it as a formal meeting and if any of you are, but we'd like to go over the scope of the work and make everybody's understanding this because we're at the point where we've got quotes for surveyors, quotes for wetland evaluation. We're ready to move forward and we need to make sure that this is the final split of the project.
So would you like to have a special meeting for that then?
I believe, yeah, a work session.
And maybe have the health department here.
Okay.
And make sure that we are meeting their requirements, but also going through the budget again.
Okay.
Fine, two and a half because, um, I'm a little concerned with some of the bids I'm seeing across the state. It appears that inflation is back again. When we started this project five years ago, it was a whole different bidding environment because no one had work. The economy's improving and the cost of materials are going up. Uh, we had a bid that came in, um, it was doubled. It was in the Hudson Valley area. It was doubled than what they had originally thought for years ago. Um, we don't see that carryover in upstate New York yet, but it's starting. You can see that New York City economy is picking up and it's going up to the Hudson Valley. There, it's a community just north of Westchester Hill. I would not be surprised though to see increases of ten percent by the time we're in a bidding state. So we want to meet with the health department, go through the budget again because there is another round of grant funding, um, that's available from EFC that, um, it's still sixty percent grant, but they've, um, increased the amount of funding that's available per community. So if there are any increases, we'd like to have this sit down meeting, put in another application if we feel we've got to increase those prices. Because you're really probably not going to be in the construction. You're going to be in two thousand, towards the end of two thousand seventeen and then into eighteen. And we want to make sure that the pricing is right and we don't have any surprises.
So do you think we're going to have to, so we're going to have to go through the whole grant ready process all over again?
Yeah, but it's, it's a simple application now because you've already awarded. It's just a matter of filling. It'll probably take an hour, an hour and a half to, uh, put in a new application, update the application, basically.
Our, our numbers are, our original estimates were projected through construction two thousand seventeen, so they're not, it's not like we have to roll them forward many years. But if there's a chance that we don't build it to two thousand eighteen, it's something to talk about and it, it doesn't, um, as Jeff was explaining to me earlier when he gave me a call that there's not, if you tell, tell them that the project's going to cost a little more, but it doesn't actually cost that additional amount, then it, it's not like it changes anything for the village.
The grant percentage will stay the same. So if it goes down, you still get sixty percent. So if we go a little high and we don't have to use it, we don't use it. But I just don't want to make sure that we don't get any surprises down the road. So I'd like to take one last, have a work session, make sure everybody's on the same page, make sure that we fit all the health department, um, requirements. Right now, to summarize, we've got a project that totaled two million seven hundred and three thousand. Uh, we've had grants already of six hundred and twenty-three thousand and the village was awarded another grant for one million two hundred and eighteen thousand. So of the two hundred, two million seven hundred and three thousand, um, we've got a total of one million eight hundred and forty-one thousand of grant and a local share of eight hundred and sixty-two thousand. Fifty thousand of that, um, we had already taken care of when we refinanced your old debt. Uh, so we've got about eight hundred and sixty-two thousand local share, um, for, um, a two million seven hundred and three thousand dollar project. So for about every dollar that's spent on the project, it's about sixty-six cents is paid for by grants and the thirty-four percent is a local. So thirty-four cents out of a dollar is what it's costing.
How to, so would you like to have the work session this month?
Yeah, I think so because it's June twentieth. It's a deadline date.
Okay, so if we go with May twenty-third, and we can't meet on the sixteenth because it's town's meeting, so two weeks from today, we meet on the twenty-third, same time, seven o'clock. Uh, that gives Mr. Wollers more than enough time to see if he can.
He can get here.
Is your schedule work for that?
Yep.
I'm out of town. I can't, so.
You're out of town? Will you be able to be here on the, okay.
And work then, it's seven o'clock and?
Here.
Here.
We have a kind of additional information. We have a bid opening tomorrow on a project and ran out for a water line project. So we'll have some, some new numbers to look at tomorrow.
Okay.
To kind of compare against the projected budget we put together. It's a little different, but a little different John, but it'll be very interesting to see if we have a bit of water line project compared to last year.
And there's a webinar on the new grant program. It's going to be, um, May eleventh. So it's coming right up in two days. If, um, let's see the webinar time.
I think I deleted that email.
Yeah.
Is that, Jeff, is that webinar any different from the one that was?
Yeah, this is going to be, they have changed the program and they're real tight-lipped on what it's going to be. Um, this year, they, the state gave an extra hundred million uh, above and beyond what was scheduled under this, it was a three-year grant program and this is the second year of the three-year grant. Well, the state legislature gave another hundred million on top of what was scheduled. So we think this is the year that they're going to give more money and I think they've relaxed some of the requirements as far as the application requirements. But they're being real tight-lipped then. So, um, on the eleventh, we're going to, they're going to announce what certain programs are. And if you can't make that webinar on the eleventh, if, if you just Google near state environment EFC, on their webpage, there's a clean water, um, there's a tab you can hit for clean water and I know that webinar will be up there. So you can access it right from the internet.
The, the village already has awarded the grants from last year's round and that's, we've already submitted your, um, your acceptance letter and everything. So that's all.
Taken care of.
Quote locked in. It's not, not talking about changing that or putting that in jeopardy.
Awesome.
But Jeff, then we also wondered if you could speak briefly about the, the process going forward.
Oh, sure.
We started on Phase Two. What, what happens in general is that we have this, Phase Two is basically water transmission mainly from Kelly Summit to the village. And our firm is a design engineer. We're contracted with you and we have subcontractors within our contract for survey, wetland delineation, geotechnical, all these things. And we've gone out and gotten quotes. We, we put together a utilization plan for our subcontractors. But before we actually get a surveyor in the field, we want to make sure, make sure that we have this project because once we start incurring those costs, then we'll be passing the invoice to the village and it's going to be pay our surveyor this month as so much it is. And the village has to be able to, to pay us so we can pay our subs. And so there's, Jeff can speak about the options of how, how is this funded under the project?
There's, um, with the Environmental Facilities Corporation, they have a short-term, um, loan program which the village could go into. And what they do is they give you, um, what they call a grid note. It's basically a line of credit. And it can be offered at zero percent interest. Um, so basically you will have the two million seven, seven hundred thousand in the bank. And then as the bills come in monthly, part of the, the services we perform is we gather all those bills and submit them to the Environmental Facilities Corporation for reimbursement. So what we do is we set up, um, a actual monthly schedule where Jake will review the vendors', um, bills that are submitted. He'll have like a week to verify quantities and that sort of thing, pass it over to the village treasurer and she'll prepare an abstract and then the bills will be taken to the village board. And then right after the village board approval, we'll get scanned copies of those and then by the middle of the week after, we'll submit them to the EFC. And by Friday, you should have money in the bank and you could pay the contractors. So we can cash flow it that way. Depending on how long it takes them, EFC, to get you in that short-term loan program, there may be a period of time where we may have to do a small bond anticipation note for three, four months if, depending on the timing. Um, and then that note just gets paid off when you go into the short-term program. You can stay in the short-term program for up to five years. Most of the time, they like to see people get out within three and then they take you to long-term finance.
And that's where the subsidizer rates come in.
Yeah, that's where it's a one-third interest rate subsidy is what the village has right now. Unless the funding line changes and you're ba, able to come above the funding line and then it could go down to zero percent. As far, as low as zero percent. But right now, it's a one-third interest rate subsidy. It's a thirty-year loan from EFC and the interest rates on them have been running about one point eight five percent with that one-third interest rate subsidy. It's a pretty good deal all the way around then with the grant. You got the grant and then you've got a one-third interest rate subsidy on top of that.
What do we need to do to start that process?
Um, basically it would be.
I think it, I think Mary, if moving forward, we had to give them our, and they're going to need utilization.
Utilization plan. That's another thing we do is we'll do all the, um, minority and women business enterprise reporting. All the contractors have to submit, um, their, um, forms and then as they're, they're going through their process, they have to keep showing that they're using the minority and women, um, businesses. It's a requirement now of the state, for any state money. There are MBEW, VVE goals. There's always been goals with the feds, There's always been goals with the feds, but the state has, even New York State's made its goals higher than the state, than the federal's. Which is typical of New York State. It's part of the frustration of, you know, New York State is we have varying wage rates that are really union rates, which inflate the cost of the job. We have the WHIPS law, which for water projects is not quite as bad. But they require that when you have a contract, you have a general contractor. If there's electrical, there's an electrical contractor, there's a plumbing contractor, and an HVAC contractor. And so you've got four different firms that are running around there. And Jake has to keep everybody organized and try to keep them on time. Water projects, we don't have as many trades as what we see with like a building or a school or something like that.
Our, our MVB utilization on this, this project is, the goal is twenty-six percent. So twenty, so we're, yeah, we're required to attempt to utilize twenty-six percent of our contract with the village and minority rural businesses. And we go through the whole soliciting process. But for instance, one of the, one of the big pieces of our utilization is actually some of the services we have solutions is providing on the project is we, we hire them to do that. And because they're a certified firm. And then also, I think the, the surveyor that we can use on phase two is a WVE firm. We've used her on projects in the past, and it's worked out well. So anyhow, the short-term financing, I believe, was, you know, they're, they're working towards that goal right now.
Yeah.
Checking off things on the list, so they, but it could be a couple more months. Mary had a feel for that. But, you know, if we gave a surveyor a green light, you know, right about now, it would be, you know, I imagine it'd be a couple months before you would see the bill show up here from that. But Jeff, I mean, there's, are there, are there any other options like interphone, interlun?
There is interfund transfer ability to do a loan from, you know, the waterfront, the capital projects account during the construction. But I think here, we'll probably, since you've got such a bank that does such a great job for you, it'd probably be easier on cash flow and everything if you just took a short-term note and, and then paid it off when, when the money came up out of it.
But that could be assumed a couple months.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's not.
You never know with EFC because it, it has to go before their loan committee. But their loan committee takes a summer off. So do you make it before against the loan committee or not? Why they can't meet, you know, in, in June and July, in August, I have no idea, but they don't get together.
Jeff, would you like to give an answer on that present on the twenty-fifth?
At the work session, we'll have a better idea.
Have you, have you a better idea on that?
All right, so then we'll reconvene on the point there.
Sounds good.
Wonderful, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for them before they go out, sorry?
Thank you for your patience.
No problem. All right, so moving on to public comments. As the hot topic for tonight, as probably quite few of you are here for, is regarding the sober house. So for all of those that want to speak in regard to the sober slash halfway house, can all of those please raise your hands?
Are we going to hear it from Jennifer?
Well, I'm asking to see who's all going to want to speak as well. Okay. All right, so, Ms. Ricker?
Yes.
All right, you have three minutes, the floor is yours.
We are a woman's sober house, we're not a halfway house. Halfway houses are stationed by Oasis, they're state-run, some are federal-run. Some of the comments that I've seen, excuse me, feeling the allergies. Our ladies are already a hundred percent detoxed and gone through rehab. We do not provide any medical services at all in our facility, in their recovery. We're not capable of doing that, we were never set up to provide that. Ladies are transported outside to counseling, to licensed psychologists, psychiatrists, doctors who provide their medications. All we do is just house them. And in that housing process, we give them the supportive living. It's alcohol and drug-free. There are other alcoholics and addicts in recovery there. We support each other, no different than a twelve-step program. It's just living every day together, teaching them how to make healthy meals, how to be moms to their children, communication skills, get them employable, get them out on their own into, into the community. It's also an aspect of the community because they go out in public and they do community service work. If the neighbors need help with their yard work, we've also served in soup kitchens. We've served in thrift stores, serving clothes. There are many things that the ladies are very capable of doing. And they just are asking for a chance to be able to get away finally. Getting away from the drug addiction and alcoholism, as I'm sure many of you are aware, on our news and in our newspapers, you're seeing the epidemic is really out of control. If, if there's any, any control at all. We're losing lives. Buffalo is now averaging ten deaths a week. And the United States total is now averaging eighty a week. We need to offer help and support to these people. The time that we've been down there remodeling this house that I've purchased, there's been alcoholics and addicts in and out of there every day. In recovery, helping to paint, helping to lay cement tiles, faucet fixtures, whatever have you, to get the house up, cleaned up, and in working order. As well as we've had many from different communities come in. Zook Suptic, they came in. They've been supported by the Little Valley Church, they have come in. The Trading Post has supported us. There's been a lot of support in this community. They believe that these women can turn their lives around and do something different than stand in the streets and drink and drug and steal. Our house is twenty-four-seven supervised, ladies are never left alone. Once they're done with our program, which lasts eight months to a year, we help them to get into an apartment, help them get up on their feet, help them be productive in society, which is no different than any of us want. We get up every day, get the suit on, we go to work, be responsible, be accountable. We're parents to our children. That's all these ladies are asking for a chance to be. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and to both, I would think we should go to Mr. Brecker. If you could please inform the process, what the role the village has regarding all of this? And say what, what has created some of the residents that are here.
I'm Gary Brecker, I'm a coenforcement officer for the village. My job is to enforce, be a fact finder, and guide people through the zoning laws. As far as Hakima's Haven, the woman's sober house, they have applied for a zoning permit, which starts the process off so that we can make them legal residents. They are in a I-one zone, which is a residential zone. A sober house is not a permitted use in a residential zone. Which takes us to maybe a special use permit. The sober house doesn't comply with any of the listings under special use permit. However, this has to go before the planning board, which in their wisdom, may be able to fit them into some, one of the categories under the special use permit. The planning board can't do that and deny the application. There's an alternative. They can apply for a use variance for the district. In that case, it goes before the zoning board appeals. These are, both boards are public hearings, so people have a chance to come, and the business owner also, and enlighten the board on how they feel. Regulations for these zoning laws are set up to keep the character of the neighborhood, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people in these districts, as well as the health, safety, and welfare of the business. You can't come into a municipality and just arbitrarily set up business without following these zoning regulations. You can't scream discrimination to circumvent zoning laws. And if you do threaten a discrimination suit, you have to prove discrimination. These laws are set up in a step-by-step basis, so we are not discriminating. And I feel that these laws are set up to give these business owners every benefit of the doubt. I was just apprised of the situation with the attorney. Gentlemen, we need an attorney in on us with this to make sure that all the legalities are met. And that's where we, that's where we stand right now. I have not received an application for a special use permit from Trina Ricker. I expect to receive that so that we can go on with the next board. This board, this is the village board, they have no jurisdiction here. Planning board has the jurisdiction, as well as the ZBA board if they have to vote for a variance. I'm here to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Brecker?
Then how is it possible that, according to the newsletters that were put out on Facebook and out in public? She was on open and made this. Does she have a letter of occupancy?
She has no certificate of occupancy. She was told not to open until she gets a permit.
Okay, there is also on these letters that she has allowed people to live in this house.
That counts as violation and we need to do that.
So how, since people are living there, will they have to get out because she's not authorized to have them there?
I can't put people out, but a judge can, and this will go to court immediately.
And also, this article's going around that, that she can do as she wants because the federal government overrules all village, county, state laws about these houses.
No, that's not true. The federal government prevents discrimination.
Right.
We have to go by home rule. That, you know, there's things in these zoning laws that are built to protect the people in the house.
Right, right.
Any other questions for Mr. Brecker?
So what's the process then after you receive? Where does it go from there for the village members? How does it go after she receives the permit? What happens next, I guess, then?
Well, it has to be determined whether she can have a permit or not.
And we said that is, is that the zoning or is that the joint?
The planning board handles the special use permit process. The zoning board of appeals handles the various processes.
Okay, so both.
And if anybody has a problem with my interpretation of the law or my enforcement, they can go to the zoning board of appeals to have me overrule. That's the only board that can overrule a coenforcement officer.
Oh, I have one more. Okay, after, to get, you know, apply for the commits and stuff, will there be a public meeting where the community members will come and say, well, we want her or we don't want her?
These hearings are public hearings, they're open to the public. And people can come in and say whether they're for or against.
Anybody on the board have any questions for Mr. Brecker?
All right, for Mr. Brecker, I have a few further ones.
I got one first, Gary. Is there a distance that this needs to stay away from the school?
No.
As far as a drug-free, that whole?
Mr. Brecker, Eric, can I have any questions for Mr. Brecker? Okay, so, Mr. Brecker, you're good for right now. I do need you to?
My, my phone is open, and I wouldn't ask to call, talk to me.
Just regarding the old school, I would ask if you could go ahead and review that to see if there's any outstanding issues going on with it, if any violations need to be awarded. Some have dropped forth attention that there might be some concerns that could be dangerous.
Or some official will have to let me into the school so I can do a?
That is owned by?
One.
By? By an individual.
By one individual?
Yes.
All right, I'll find out who that is, and we'll go through it.
Okay. And primarily, it's the property that people are concerned about. There's, there's a long history regarding it, but that we need to address that instead of looking for?
There's two alternatives. If I were to condemn that, there's two alternatives. One is to either rehabilitate it and make it legal again, or demolish it.
If you condemn it, does that then make it our responsibility?
No, if I condemn it, it's the owner's responsibility. The owner will give him a time limit to submit a compliance schedule to me. And then we will file, follow that compliance schedule. I mean, it's, we don't get into years, we get, it's days. He's got to let us know what he intends on doing. If he's going to rehabilitate, it will take an architect to do that. And we want an architect's plan. If he's going to demolish, there's quite a procedure to go through demolition involving asbestos. I would assume there's a lot of asbestos in the home.
That's the big issue with that. That's why nothing has been done with it, because of the cause of the risk.
You know, hold it right? You know, hold it right? You should go get the contact. I have the contact information if you want.
Okay. You're, I bet you're the expert on the board on asbestos, I'm just.
I wouldn't say the expert, I doubt so.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Brecker.
Hopefully that cools things down for now until we have a planning board.
I mean, so essentially, any concerns regarding the sober house will need to be addressed to the planning board. Because there's nothing that we can do as a board unless you just want to make a statement regarding all of it. I mean, you have your three minutes, everybody can go ahead and do that. But from the board's end, there's nothing that we can do further except follow the process of the law, which Mr. Brecker is going through and Mr. Ricker are going through to get this?
Yeah, if you have concerns, call me. I take the concerns to the board. The board's got a lot of questions that have to be answered, like certifications, is she administering medications?
If we have concerns, we should adjust them to you first so it can be presented to this planning board. If the planning board, in effect, goes through its procedure and they do see no reason not to allow the permit, once that's done, then the residents have no say, is that correct?
Well, the residents do have a say, but we just can't walk in and say, no, we don't like you and we don't like your business.
I understand that.
That's discrimination.
But if the planning board says that they will allow them the permit, then it's a done deal. Is that correct or no?
Well, yeah, and if you have concerns, you air them with the planning board because they may be viable concerns.
Well, is there a, is there a joint planning board meeting scheduled?
There's a regular meeting scheduled Wednesday night at seven. They'll be reviewing the comprehensive plan. But other than a brief notification from Gary, they don't have any information yet. There's no meeting packet, case packet to, to present to them.
Planning board is usually like two weeks before they schedule a meeting so that the information that I take to them, they can digest.
And you can go ahead and get publicly on this thing, after Gary.
It has to be put in paper. I think it's ten days.
Put in local paper or the Bradford paper?
What is your legal?
Olean.
Olean.
Olean time.
Okay.
And will a notice be posted out here too?
Yeah, I always post, I always post them inside and outside.
Okay, so regarding this quickly, to wrap this up then. If anybody has any questions for Ms. Ricker, would you be free to answer, would you care to answer any?
I have continuously stated on Facebook and read it publicly known on flyers to the town and surrounding areas. We have always welcomed, our phone line is open, our doors open. And then you can have a cup of coffee, ask questions. Instead of all the assumptions going on of what do we do in there and how do we do? Come ask us. We have no problem answering your questions. We don't want to bring fear into the community. That's the last thing that we want to do. You know, addicts are just as scared of you as you are of them. They just want a chance, and they'll be more than willing to talk to you.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for Ms. Ricker?
I have a couple.
I have a couple, um. Let me get your other light mouse on, I, I don't understand what Narcan is, but you said that you.
It's an opioid blocker, um, if a heroin user has used heroin.
Right.
Um, we have a certain amount of time, depends on how much they've used, depends on how many weeks, there's a lot of things you have to calculate. Um, but what it does is we inject through the nose, we, our kits have two hits in them. And it blocks and it pretty much makes them dope sick. It blocks the heroin in their system.
Right.
And it's pretty much like a withdrawal, they can sometimes get upset, aggravated, frustrated, sleepy, there's a lot of different systems depending on the person.
I understand what it is, is it considered a medication?
No, I have, I have been told by New York State that anyone can go to, it's usually the bigger drugstores and buy it, you don't need to be certified to administer it.
We were already certified before that, that took effect, where they, as you're saying, in the drugstores, we were already certified.
No. You're saying this is just a, that they go through the detox program, you don't anticipate any need of it, so why have had it?
You never know where you're gonna be nowadays, um, I always tell you, we were certified on Wednesday and I kid you not, on Saturday. At a stop sign, a young lady passed out at the wheel with a needle still in her arm and a boyfriend tried to push her out of the way. You never know nowadays where you're gonna need it.
Right.
I would rather save a life than watch someone pass through this disease.
All right, and like I said, you know, it's just something I'm curious about, I'm a fireman, I don't carry a tank of water around in case I run and go fire, you know, um.
Do you carry Narcan?
No, I do not. You don't, you say that Oasis doesn't govern you?
Correct.
Who does?
I'm the founder.
So there's no, you know.
We have a team and they're, certainly discuss medications come in, if there's need for change within the house, if we need to alter rules.
And then, uh, the last thing that I got for you is, you know, when Crawford and I stopped by page a visit, you had told me that there wasn't anyone in the house yet. But the newspaper says there's people in the house and.
Correct.
So why did you bypass the procedures that you know needed to be done?
Because there's a federal law that protects us, if you'd like to take a look at the Fair Housing Act.
But according to our code enforcement.
Federal overrides any town, any village, federal law. Federal law. When it comes to discussing who, which all of you are, discussing who is in there and not what, that does become discrimination and it violates our federal rights. Disease of alcoholism and addiction, they are considered disabled until they put that drug back in their system. That's a federal law, it overrides.
I've, I've got a question for you. You told Wort and I when we stopped over that when you were trying to open Olean. That you had filled out papers and you were waiting for a special use permit there.
Correct.
Why wouldn't you do it here?
Because we know there's federal law, I did not exercise it in Olean and I've had enough of being run from town to town when these heroin addicts and these alcoholics need help. It's time for me to stand up. Unfortunately, I didn't have that courage before, but I have now and I will knock that down, I will take this to the courts if I have to.
We're not condemning what you're doing, it's just, you know, like I said there when we met, awareness in the community is, is a big thing, you know what I mean? That's the thing, you know, if you went through the process, maybe we wouldn't have so many people here.
Well, let me ask you another question. How many of you, when you get a new neighbor or new tenant, how many of you run right over there and say, are you a heroin addict? Are you an alcoholic? How many of us do that?
Who wouldn't know what it is if you had advertised it, but that's the thing.
In regards to all this going back and forth, we've gotta stop, the, the bottom line is that the board cannot and has no authority to make any decision regarding this. There will be the hearings, the public will be informed regarding it and if anybody has any further concern, I would advise you to stay informed. And come to the board meeting when they make that decision. In regards to any other concerns, everybody is, you're able to have your time for your three minutes to state your piece. And then it is already eight o'clock and we have much business to go forward with, so, uh, let's go break down the line. And I appreciate everybody for being very cordial to each other and being respectful, thank you.
Uh, excuse me, um, so in other words, after the planning board, let's say they go through a whole process, public hearings, they say no. And Ms. Ricker gonna go ahead and say, it don't matter, federal law says I can have it.
That would be up between the, those boards and Ms. Ricker's, the village is, the village could not be involved in that.
She, she has to run the gauntlet with the village requirements.
Right.
And then if she's totally turned down, uh, then if she's, uh, claiming, uh.
Discrimination.
Discrimination, uh, she can sue.
But she has to keep the plates closed until then?
That's, that's my understanding.
All right, uh, Mr. Aubrey.
Let me, watching your video, you post, uh, about the lawyer not being wanted anymore. You both talked about being in the best interest of, uh, village. If he's being, the board has decided that we're paying him too much money or too much money's going out and they're being in the best interest of the village and the budget? How can you not onboard like it was too much?
In regard to the budget that we have set forth that everybody on the board reviewed.
Cause now he is, as he stated, he works for you, not these guys, not the village, not, not the board, you.
In regards to all of that, I'm not sure how, where anything stands regarding it because the termination of such an employee or removal of any such employee. Lies within the office of the mayor. So regarding it, that's why I assume is going forward to confirm those, the information that both sides have and the courts then can make the decision regarding such.
Are you not a employee of the village? But I agree.
I'm an elected official.
Sorry, okay, but you still work for us, the village people.
I'm here to serve the residents, correct.
Why are you not looking out for our better interest then?
Regarding that, I would say that the services that Mr. Francis has provided and the guidance that he's given to the board regarding laws and how to handle such cases. And certain issues that have come up, he's been very, very helpful and has saved, saved us money. And I would stand by that he's done a great job for everybody here that is a resident and has helped us with certain matters. And kept us aligned and has provided us great insight in regards to the law, which we haven't had for some time to have an attorney here almost every meeting.
Do you need one every meeting?
I, I would like to because I don't know the law by the back of my hand. I'm not a judiciary, I can't make any of those decisions, so to have the guidance of an attorney that has studied eminenceful law, I believe is absolutely needed and it's very valued. Especially with getting an eminenceful attorney for eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cents an hour, when typically any attorney, you're talking a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars for an eminenceful, if not higher, especially in cities and such. So I do stand by regarding all of that.
May I add something to that, if you don't mind? This is just to let you guys know what the village pays for their attorney. Right now, uh, we have a village attorney and she has a twenty thousand dollar retainer and she charges, I think, over two hundred dollars an hour. So the price, or the services that Dr. Francis is providing are, I mean, that's a, that's a great deal for, for the village.
And Alan is.
Does your attorney attend every meeting?
Um, I'd say just about, just about every meeting.
And that is, um, he's talking, Alan is talking about the village of Kewaun.
The village of Kewaun is quite bigger than the village Kewaun.
And you have to look at all the issues. All right, Mr. Stinky.
Mr. Is it Stinky?
Ms. Stinky, that's me.
Oh, Ms. Stinky, oh, uh, you're here for the insurance, my colleagues, okay, um.
Wake us up.
Yeah, I know mine, and then, um. Julia or Julie?
I, I just wanna start to say I'm not a resident of Gatling County, but, um, I met Ms. Ricker last July. My son was home from Germany, he was stationed in Germany, he was home on leave, three days before he was to go back. He met Ms. Ricker and she convinced him that her sober house was a fabulous idea and he was going to lease his home to her for X amount of dollars. It was gonna be done on a land contract, all these wonderful things, his house would not be empty, there would be young women in there with a rump over their head, food in their clothes, everything was taken care of. Um, it took me about three hours to realize after he left and went back to Germany.